Good morning, everyone. If you see me squinting, I forgot my glasses today along with my purse, so forgive me. Or if I call out something wrong because I read it wrong. So anyway, we'll do a little call.
Mayor who will vote for this?
President.
Steve Summers?
President.
Mayor Smith?
President.
Christopher Walton?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Mary Als-Wood?
Here.
Kyle Patterson?
Here.
Diane Michaels?
President.
Mayor Finan?
Here.
Alicia Beck?
Patrick Brown?
Here.
Katina Walter?
I'm here.
And Kelly. Thank you.
All right. The approval of the agenda, including the correction of the minutes, there was no minutes for December 17th. So with the corrected date of November 17th for the minutes, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So is there any participation? No? All right. All right. On to our minutes for the November 17 meeting in 2023. Do I hear a motion to approve the draft of the meeting minutes?
So.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. We have our consolidated financial reports. And I know the last time I said your name, I meant--
It's okay. It's Orion.
Orion.
Yep. So I'm going to jump straight to December, and I might just be doing a little bit of comparative between that and October. Our last meeting we had, we didn't have the October financials available because Veterans Day made it to where we weren't able to get the reports needed to finalize the financials before the meeting. And then, of course, you know, December, we didn't have a meeting. So we got three sets of financials here. If you're looking at Funds 104, 475, and 474, you'll see those have remained relatively unchanged since our last meeting. Fund 109 had a million-dollar balance deficit for ICER. Again, just as I recap, that was because we were still trying to collect from the startup cost, and the first reimbursement that we did for the drawdown was quarterly. We've moved that to a monthly drawdown going forward, so hopefully the balance shouldn't get that big going forward. But we will see a deficit of around $500,000 or $600,000 roughly almost every single month just related to the activity of ICER. And then, of course, we're collecting it the following month through submission. Let's see here. Fund 60 for the police training, that one had been split out. You'll see that there was a change in the balance of closer to about $350,000, $400,000. The increase is actually related to pulling out the remaining fund balance from Fund 75 and moving it over to Fund 60 after we were able to close out the grant, or the current grant that they have going on. And yeah, Fund 75 relatively unchanged and healthy. And then the workforce, typically the workforce development fund balance usually shows a deficit closer to 400,000 to 500,000. It's sitting around 267 at the end of the year. Main reason for this is because we submitted for as much of the cash draws as we could, and we even reached out to Parkland to get some of the costs that we were going to cover in advance due to the shutdown, or potential shutdown for the Fed. So make sure we had all that funding, you know, pushed out before anything took place there.
All right.
That's about it. If you've got any questions, just let me know. And Mike said I didn't cover October, Novembers, but yeah, if you have any questions there as well.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the consolidated financial reports for October, November, and December?
So.
Second. Second. Is there any discussion? Got it? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right. Motion carried. We have our list of bills.
So Fund 475 had no activity in November, December, as far as processing of expenditures. The USDA account 474 had no expenditures in December. The rest of the main, rest of the activity, just operational, no unusual activity to note. Again, if you've got any questions, just let me know on that.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to accept and place on file the list of bills for November and December?
So move Michaels.
Second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Action, we have one action item, is the approval of the personnel policy revisions. Who's good? Can't be so bad.
Good morning. We have recommendations for some changes to the personnel policy for you. The first one is changes to the Training and Educational Assistance section. There's been some confusion amongst employees about what benefits are actually available to employees for tuition reimbursement. And so this, these revisions seek to provide clarification to that. We do not have organization-wide in-service trainings, although some divisions have those trainings. We also do not have an organization-wide tuition reimbursement program. Essentially, tuition reimbursement is funded through certain programs when funding is available specifically for those purposes. So the revisions to this section just seek to provide clarification to that process and also to remove the references to semesters. We know that a lot of advanced education institutions may have other options besides just semesters for education. And then also removal of the reference to the maximum of three credit hours. Some advanced courses may be, you know, four credit hours. So those are the recommended changes to that particular section. We're also requesting revision to the holiday section. When the HEDSTART AFSCME contract was negotiated last year and approved by the county board, there were three additional holidays added, referred to as winter break. And the bargaining employees get those holidays as paid holidays. So we are asking for non-bargaining HEDSTART division employees to also receive those three holidays as paid holidays as recognized by the childhood program calendar. And in conjunction with that, we're asking that the commission would retroactively approve those three days for December. I can't remember what the actual dates were.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight.
Yes. So non-bargaining employees, even though those dates were listed on the calendar, they weren't formally recognized as paid holidays in the personnel policy. So non-bargaining employees had to take those days using their benefit time. So we're asking for retroactive approval for those days to be covered as paid holidays so those employees do not have to use their personal or vacation time. And then in regards to salary and merit adjustments, we have some programs that end not in conjunction with the fiscal year. So for instance, HEDSTART, that program ends in February. And so there are COLA adjustments that are made through the grant that take effect. And so that approval process for salary adjustments and salary range adjustments happens at the end of the year, and that's not in alignment with when that program ends. So we're trying to capture in the personnel policy language that would allow for those kinds of adjustments to be made if they're funded through the grant. As long as the commission approves those grants and there's funding identified for those increases in salary adjustments, that they would be approved with each other so that we don't have to, you know, continuously come back for approval from the commission when there are mid-year adjustments to salary ranges that are authorized by the grant. And additionally, we're asking for language to be added to the policy that would allow for retention and incentive compensation. Again, some grants allow for those, you know, one-time opportunities. And so just capturing in the personnel policy the ability to be able to pay employees incentive and retention increases as long as the grants are funding those things. And that would be upon approval of the program director and CEO. And then the last request is actually for tentative personnel policy changes, and this is related to the Pay Leave for All Workers Act. So I know many of you have probably been dealing with this in your own organizations, and you're aware that the final rules for this have not been released yet, so we're working from proposed rules. And so we have drafted a tentative policy in conjunction with assistance from the state's attorney's office to try to address this implementation of this act based on information that we have available at this time. So this particular act, I don't want to go too far into the weeds because I know you're probably all mostly already familiar with this, but the act establishes a minimum paid leave standard that requires employers to provide employees with one hour of paid leave per 40 hours or pro-rata number of hours. So most of our employees are 37 and a half hours. RPC already has an existing policy in place that provides above and beyond what's required by the act. So what we have, what we're recommending and what we have been doing is essentially crediting vacation leave that is being earned by employees to the paid leave for all workers leave. And so they are, the employees are accruing those benefits in conjunction with each other, and they're just kind of being tracked in separate buckets. So it's not a new benefit for employees unless an employee did not already receive vacation time, then they would qualify for this new benefit time, paid leave for all worker time. We have also received some preliminary guidance from the CEO that would, leads us to believe that we do not have to provide this leave to our workforce experience students. So at this time, we're not providing that benefit to them. We have addressed that in our tentative policy, but of course contingent upon the final rules, you know, we may have to make adjustments to that. So we expect that when the final rules are released, we'll review our policy and ensure that it's still in compliance with what the final rules are, and then bring that back to you for final approval.
Question?
Yeah. The retroactive, that was a little, maybe a little confusing, so maybe I misinterpreted it. But were you saying that if an employee, they didn't have the time off, basically it wasn't a, it was for bargaining units but not for non-bargaining units? So if they took a day off and used their personal PTO time, whatever version of that is, they would now get that credited back to them essentially? But what about the employees who worked?
None of the employees worked because it was on the calendar as, as winter break.
And then they had, okay, got it.
I don't know if it's necessary for RPC, but I know that Illinois Municipal League was encouraging cities and villages and towns to basically adopt a resolution saying that their plan was in compliance with the Pay Leave for All Workers Act. And I, we've got samples of that. It may be something we want to consider doing. I don't know.
So are you, I think I did read a little bit about that, essentially saying that we don't have to make any changes because we're already providing above and beyond--
Correct.
--what the-- Yeah.
We did it at the city. I don't know if Indiana did. We did, yeah.
It's essentially you can exempt, we exempted the city.
I don't-- And we can because we're home rule.
Yeah, I don't know that we're eligible.
But there was also a non-home rule version of the, of the resolution that says we're in compliance.
Okay. Well, I can visit with Matt about that, but I, you know, we, the implementation of this has gone pretty smoothly, and it seems to be working for us, so I don't know that we'd want to change course.
Well, so it wouldn't change your implementation, it would just be a policy statement that the way that you're doing it complies with the act.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll backtrack to the education and the tuition one. I remember at one time, part of one of the benefits for getting qualified people for Head Start was letting them go ahead and go through the classes and stuff to be certified. That doesn't affect that in any way, does it?
No.
So that'll still be covered then?
Yes.
And it's not, okay.
So essentially, you know, the opportunities for education assistance will be driven by program funding that's available specifically designated for those purposes.
Yeah. Is there any discussion internally about a larger tuition reimbursement program, not just based off of what's being funded by specific programs? I know that we've had a hard time retaining staff and keeping staff over the years, so it would just seem that if there was an organizational-wide tuition program that was separate from these, that might be something that we would want to take a look at. I don't know if you guys have already had internal conversations, or Becky, what you think the efficacy of something like that would be?
Yes. The challenge that we have is that some grants have the funding available for tuition and some don't. And so we, you know, take those on case-by-case basis based on funding, and I think this policy revision is going to really help, you know, when we sometimes have to say we can't fund the particular tuition. But, you know, our, our vision is, of course, to support the professional development of all employees at any time. But Christopher, that's, that's great. I think we're all on, I think we're on the same page. Yeah.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the personnel policy provisions?
So.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Motion carried. Brandy?
Good start. Good morning. As of last week, staff and vacancies have decreased, and the number of classrooms closed have reduced by 50%. We now only have five classrooms closed out of 32 across all four centers. As a result of the new hires and the opening of classrooms, our enrollment has also increased to 83% for Head Start, 80% for early Head Start, and 54% in early Head Start expansion. And we continue to get applications every day, not only for children but also for staff. So that's, that's really, we're moving in a right direction. I had a meeting with the program's regional office program specialist yesterday, and he said we are doing very well compared to other programs in Region 5, which includes Illinois, Indiana, Ohio, Michigan, Wisconsin, and Minnesota. So this is a very big, it's a big difference from, from where we were in November and the last time I reported to you, so really making some headway. Our program will continue to search and recruit for high-qualified employees as well as build a healthy waitlist to all, to fill the remaining classrooms once they are open. The WICD News will be airing an advertisement of our program. It's for child recruitment, that's where our focus is going to be. So be on the lookout for that. That's really exciting, and it looks really awesome. And I do want to report that we've had some, our attendance has decreased somewhat since November, and I shared this with the policy council this past Monday. We've seen an increase in illnesses. We still have a high number of cases of COVID. We've had high cases of respiratory viruses, RSV, and the flu. And now we also have norovirus coming into our community. So we are continuously washing our hands, keeping our classrooms clean. We are properly training our new employees that are coming in and making sure that they are following the safety guidelines that we have in place to prevent communicable illnesses. But I just wanted to share with you, if you're seeing those management reports and you're seeing the attendance drop, that is why. We've had several children and, as well as employees. And the cases for the employees have been quite extreme in some cases, so, and we're talking hospitalization. So those are some things that are out there, and just wanted to keep you abreast, and that concludes my report today.
Thank you, Brandy. Is there a motion to approve the Head Start management board? Just one more. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we are ready for our program division updates, so we'll start with--
You're good.
Orion, thank you. I almost--
It stuck in my head.
Currently, fiscal's been busy with the monthly and the quarterly reporting based on, you know, December's year-end financials. In addition to that, CLA, our external auditor for the county, has started field, I wouldn't call it field work, interim field work for the fiscal year '23 audit. So in November and December, they typically do walkthrough forms, control testing, make sure that the actual internal controls are there so they can identify how much they want to test when they actually come out for the field work. So I've been working with the auditor's office on that, as well as the preparation of RPC's portion of the financial statements and the CIFA for reporting of all the federal funding for the grants. In addition to that, we've also, the project monthly reports that, I feel like I sound like a broken record sometimes talking about this because I feel like I bring it up almost every meeting. But so the project monthly reports that we've been working on for RPC through SSRS are done at this point, so now we're in the testing stage. Part of that is we've realized that we've had to make several updates within the project's module within UNIS. So basically, all of our fiscal staff as of right now, they've, they each have their own assignment to grants. They're going through right now and individually updating all of the information they can within the UNIS module, so that way the data is there, so when the report runs, it runs correctly. So the report's correct, we just need to make sure that the data is actually there and exists so that it, you know, pulls everything forward correctly at this point. Other than that, I've got a few smaller reports that I'm going to be working on as well within SSRS here real soon, mainly just, again, pulling of existing information on the grants so it can be shared with the program staff. And I'm working with Tyler on that here, so as far as big-ticket items, that's, I believe that covered it.
Thank you. Becky?
Thank you. Good morning again. RPC currently has 314 active employees, which includes 68 work-experienced participants. The Human Resources Department has been focused on several strategies to attract, motivate, and retain qualified staff. As Brandy mentioned, I do want to report the HR department is very grateful for the reduction in ghosting with job offers. It's a huge accomplishment. The management team is working to strategically fill 20 vacancies with Head Start, two vacancies with community services, and one open position with police training. Our indoor climate research and training, our ICER workforce development planning and community development administration, data, and technology are all fully staffed. Thank goodness, and thank you all. The increased productivity with our talent acquisition strategies are attributed to investing into our compensation initiatives, especially with the Head Start bargaining unit. Over the last 60 days, Head Start has been able to open five classrooms, as Brandy mentioned. One, one at the West, excuse me, those are, those are classrooms that have been opened at West Champaign and the Elizabeth Murphy Center. We are experiencing the lowest vacancies since the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic, as well as the lowest turnover rate. RPC ended 2023 with a turnover rate of 38%, which is 6% lower than 2022, and I attribute that to really a collective team effort amongst this very strong leadership team, you know, and our employees. They're helping us bring people in and, you know, welcoming, welcoming, you know, new employees and, you know, collectively trying to build this team. Other active projects include UKG, Human Resources Information System. Implementation is moving forward. We are currently refining the Recruitment and Performance Management modules. The Recruitment module should be live by March 1st, and the Performance module should go live on April Fool's Day. Additionally, Human Resources is in the process of developing this year's affirmative action plan that we use for multiple grants and especially with some of the city grant works that require those documents, or the document. I'm happy to report that RPC will be hosting an event to support the Champaign-Urbana Shelterless Community to collect items for our homeless community, including soap, shampoo, socks, fruit snacks, cough drops, water, and toothpaste, toothbrushes. So we'll have boxes out at all sites, make those collections, and get to the community resources that will be utilizing those items. Finally, the HR report has transaction, personnel transactions from November 5th, 2023, through January 13th, 2024, and the report is being submitted today for the board's approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right. Lisa's not here, so is anyone doing her report? Sarita?
Good morning, everyone. Staff members did work on several planning and community development projects, but I wanted to highlight a few of them. First, I'm happy to report that on December, we were notified by the USDOT that we were awarded $945,000 from the SE4A, the Safe and Straightforward Grant, to complete three eligible activities under the supplemental activities of the SE4A grant for developing new safety action plans for Champaign-Urbana, for rural Champaign County, for purchasing automatic pedestrian and bike counters to be installed in the community, and for doing a demonstration project on Lincoln Avenue, working with the City of Urbana. The local match for this grant to get to the $1.2 million total amount of the grant would be provided by IDOT, $250,000 by IDOT, and $40,000 by the City of Urbana. Then RPC doesn't need to provide any local match for the grant, which is great. At this time, staff is coordinating with the City of Urbana and with the Federal Highway Administration to start developing the grant agreement, because this is an agreement that will be directly signed with the USDOT through the Federal Highway Administration. And at the same time, we'll have to sign an agreement with IDOT for the local match and a sub-contract with the City of Urbana for the demonstration project. Also, yesterday, we received a piece of good news from IDOT. Last year, we applied for four new vehicles for C cards. We were awarded three of the four vehicles, which is great because those vehicles have all the vehicles that we currently have for C cards have exceeded their useful life, and we're spending a lot of money maintaining those vehicles, then getting new vehicles is good. At this time, we have 14 vehicles that we have been waiting for a long time, since 2019, to replace the current ones that we have. But with these new ones, we were told that we'll be getting them in three years. What's--
Two years.
Four years. Well, we have been waiting since 2019. Then adding three more to the list, now there are 14 that we have been waiting for. Also, we have been in conversations with Champaign County Opio Task Force. They approached us to see the possibility of C cards providing service for residents of Champaign County who need transportation services for treatment for opio. Then we have been--
Staff members did work on several planning and community development projects, but I wanted to highlight a few of them. First, I'm happy to report that on December, we were notified by the US DOT that we were awarded $945,000 from the SE4A, that the Safe and Straightforward Grant, to complete three eligible activities under the supplemental activities of the SE4A grant for developing new safety action plans for Champaign-Urbana, for rural Champaign County, for purchasing automatic pedestrian and bike counters to be installed in the community, and for doing a demonstration project on Lincoln Avenue, working with the City of Urbana. The local match for this grant to get to the $1.2 million total amount of the grant would be provided by IDOT, $250,000 by IDOT, and $40,000 by the City of Urbana. Then RPC doesn't need to provide any local match for the grant, which is great. At this time, staff is coordinating with the City of Urbana and with the Federal Highway Administration to start developing the grant agreement because this is an agreement that will be directly signed with the US DOT through the Federal Highway Administration. And at the same time, we'll have to sign an agreement with IDOT for the local match and a sub-contract with the City of Urbana for the demonstration project. Also, yesterday, we received a piece of good news from IDOT. Last year, we applied for four new vehicles for C-Carts. We were awarded three of the four vehicles, which is great because those vehicles have all the vehicles that we currently have for C-Carts have exceeded their useful life, and we're spending a lot of money maintaining those vehicles. Then getting new vehicles is good. At this time, we have 14 vehicles that we have been waiting for a long time, since 2019, to replace the current ones that we have. But with these new ones, we were told that we'll be getting them in three years. What's?
Two years.
Two years. Well, we have been waiting since 2019. Then adding three more to the list, now there are 14 that we have been waiting for. Also, we have been in conversations with Champaign County Opio Task Force. They approached us to see the possibility of C-Carts providing service for residents of Champaign County who need transportation services for treatment for opioid. Then, we have been in conversations with them and with empty D staff that basically operate C-Carts to look into doing this. The good news is that if Champaign County is able to provide this funding, this funding will be used as local match for the funding that is provided through IDOT for the service and will be able to draw down a significant amount of money that we are currently sending back to IDOT because we don't provide local match. Then, this is good news for everyone because the population of rural Champaign County that is not able to get this service will be getting the service and will be able to expand the service and retain the funding here that we are sending back at this time. Then, let's see, to be seen that we are working on that. And the other piece of good news, as Becky mentioned, finally, we have a planning manager in place after 16 months with our planning manager, and we have a transportation engineer after two years with our transportation engineer in planning and community development. Then, we are fully staffed, finally. Any questions?
Just a comment. I'm so excited about C-Carts moving forward, no matter how little it is, because it's been a labor of love for many departments in many areas. And this with the Opio Task Force is going to be very, very important as we have a meeting next week. Thank you.
I hope that we can get that in place with the C-Cart budget starting on July 1st. That's why I'm pushing this really hard to try to get that budget approved by the county board in March to submit it to IDOT and get it done by July 1st to start providing the service. Thank you, C.
Yeah, I'll comment on that too because, as we both know, C-Carts is making a big difference in the quality of life of the people that use that service. It's had a great impact on Rancho, as you well know. And I'm just glad to see those additions. I just hope that our vehicles don't wear out before the good which end.
Well, I just agree, the analysis of the, a benefit cost analysis of the finance for last year, C-Cart expenditures and all that, and maintenance costs increased 26% last year due to the fleet that we have to be able to maintain those vehicles operating has been huge.
Any other discussion or questions for Rita? If not, I am going to go to Justin.
Morning. The big project that we're working on right now, I know.
I feel like a shrimp here.
Maybe I should try to chill down a little bit.
You know, it's fun.
Our big project is our four-year plan, so we need to make a plan for workforce development for our area that covers 2024 to 2027. That is, that plan is in part what has us able to receive federal funding for the next four years. And so, we started in December. We had to engage our chief elected officials, which are the board chairs of the five counties in our workforce area, economic development corporations, training providers like Parkland College and Danville area Community College, labor organizations, community organizations, which we primarily engage with through the Champaign County Community Coalition and others. And we talked about workforce development from the federal and state kind of framework, which is around having a employment and job training services as a poverty reduction strategy. So, you're really looking at the need of your area. And out of our six counties in our region, depending on the place and the region and the demographic, there's 10 to 20% poverty rate. And then, there's barriers to employment among different demographics, like being a single parent or justice-involved or non-Snap benefits. Sometimes poverty is temporary, sometimes it's more long-term, sometimes it's generational. And then, there's factors associated with poverty, usually low education, not more than high school education, or some college. So, we looked at that information and saw that there's a need for workforce development here for employment and job training activities. We talked through our services with our core partners. We provide workforce development activities, which is employment and job training. And then, we work with Parkland Adult Ed to provide Title II services. We work with Department of Human Services, vocational rehab, assist folks with disabilities, and then folks who are unemployed seeking jobs. We're working with the Illinois Department of Employment Security. So, we talked through how are we going to provide services over the next four years to job seekers? And we, I wrote it all down in a plan. And then, the kind of fun thing in that is we also, in addition to the stakeholders and the system and the partners and the services and the need, then we also got to talk about opportunities over the next four years. Some of the opportunities, most opportunities are related to economic development initiatives. So, things like the Climate Equity and Jobs Act, the University of Illinois, IPED Tech Hub, some interest in sector engagement in our region, apprentice expansion, minority economic empowerment, rural development, construction and infrastructure projects, influx of immigrants and refugees. These are all opportunities for workforce development in the workforce development system to connect low-income, low-skill folks with barriers to employment to real work opportunities, either through job search assistance or through job training. So, it was exciting to see not only the need of the partners, but also the great opportunities that are in our area. That's a cause for optimism. So, we are wrapping that up this week and then doing some editing. And then, it will go out for public comment in February, and it will go to our Chief Elected Officials Board, the five counties, and then to our Workforce Board to review as well in February. And then, once we receive public comments and feedback from those two boards, then we'll submit to the state. And we'll have a plan for the next four years and be eligible for funding, so.
Any questions for Justin? If not, then we will go to Tyler.
Good morning, everyone. So, a few updates for the Data Technology Division. We had a, the RPC website was finished, redesigned, and that allows us to move on to the Data Portal website, which is a website that contains geographic data resources, created both internally and from neighboring jurisdictions. That will be updated to improve the site layout, design, usability, the goal of expanding the site further this year with expanding the data sets included. For the UKG project, specific to the HR module, we've successfully integrated the AIM background checking system into the UKG system so that it is simply, within UKG, you can click to initiate the background checks, and then they are submitted to the company, and they automatically get submitted back in as an attachment within the UKG system. So, we're working on two other integrations for additional fingerprint and the reference checking for that system as well. For the time and labor piece of the, of the UKG system, we are continuing to test. We've completed on the county side, testing the payroll counters. And now, they're moving into the accruals for both payroll and RPC to test the accruals profiles. That should take about a month to complete the accruals testing, and then we'll be able to move on to the parallel payroll testing with the current chrono system and the exports from our UKG system. We'll want to run two parallel runs of our payroll over two different pay periods, so that'll take about a month, assuming there are no, no major issues that come up during that. We're looking for a go-live date of around April of this year for the time and labor module. Our Sierra program has been moved to its new platform, and the geolocation mapping site has been completed alongside it. This year, as part of our strategic plan for the RPC, we'll be looking at the feasibility of this consumer relation management software, comparing it with other systems, and to see if improvements can be made within our tracking software. In IT news, we're working with our MCS tech vendor at updating all the computers within the RPC to Windows 11. This will be an issue for some because certain hardware requirements for Windows 11 prohibit certain computers from being capable of upgrading. We're making a list of all these computers so we know which ones will need to be replaced instead of upgraded, but the upgrade will be free for everyone else to the Windows 11 Pro. And that will come, that will be forced on us by October of 2025, so we have quite a bit of time. But other municipalities are already moving to Windows 11, and any new computer you buy comes with Windows 11 installed, so we have to start working on this now. In other news, we renewed the Ameren contract for another year of data analysis work for their energy efficiency outreach programs, and we'll be kicking that off here in a couple weeks. And we also were able to hire a data technology manager who is coming onboard next month after a couple of years of searching, and we're very excited. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
There's no questions, simple and refined. The call.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here, actually, with you in person for the first time. So, I'm going to give a few updates before I start talking about that.
He's going to let you flip.
Okay.
As you can recall. Just arrow. Cut it straight from one to the other. Okay?
Okay. One of our data and technology directors. A few, few updates. One, since I know you all last met, we did make, did fill our last job posting Becky mentioned, that we were, we're fully staffed. We're actually going to be looking at whether we need to expand and have some additional positions, but for everybody, we wanted to, we've got them. And for me, very importantly, is the, on December 4th, we have an Assistant Director for Research, which really expand our ability to pursue funding opportunities in that way. And while we've only been with RPC for about over six months, this is a job that we have recognized needed to be filled since 2015. And so, it's very exciting to actually have that so that we can truly start growing that side of the program. We have, in addition to the primary training grant that funds most of our activities, we have a contract that got underway in December, really, with Ameren. We are not prime, we are sub to another organization that's on Healthier Homes, which is kind of our bailiwick. So, we've got that to run, to be part of the team that runs the Ameren Service Territory Healthier Homes program. We're trying to figure exactly where we're going to launch it. It may well be in Champaign or somewhere else close by. So, that's, that's a nice project that we have going. We also are, you can help me with this one. We are sub to Parkland on a SEJA proposal that has been provisionally awarded, but they're working on terms to make sure the terms work for us so that there's not too much risk. But assuming that happens, that will fund some additional training out of our center to work on SEJA and support that program with Parkland. One other announcement before I start talking about this here. Yesterday, we had a visit to our training center from State Senator Paul Tarachi. And I, my opinion is, and Doris can share his thoughts, I think it went very, very well. I think we were able to show him a lot of really exciting activities that we do, really show the kind of impact that we can have in Champaign County and his district, as well as across the state and across the country. And one other thing, we have, multiple staff have had presentation proposals accepted for delivery at national conferences later into the year, practitioner conferences primarily to go and teach people at a national level about the stuff that we do and how they can do it better in their areas. Okay. So, how many? Eighteen pages. Okay. Yeah, it is working. So. Just myself, forehanding here. Okay. So, we are working with DCEO to develop a new training center. We are in currently about 11,000 square feet over in the research park, and we are pretty well busting at the seams. So, DCEO wants us to have what they look at as the premier training center in the country, and they're providing funding for us. Have the premier training center in the country. We're working through the contracting now to add $9 million to our current IGA to get started on developing this training center. Probably I ought to stand up and point at DCEO. There might be a point at that. There might be, but pointing at it from way over there, I'll find an S. So, this is based on about a 60,000-square-foot facility. That's what we're looking for, 60,000 square feet. And a lot of it's going to be in basic offices, conference rooms, things like that. We have this large classroom that if it's opened up to all four areas, it becomes a conference center. DCEO wants this to be where they would have all of the state conferences for weatherization, CSKG, things like that. So, that would be right, right here. We have several other classrooms, one that's an HVAC classroom. So, all along this wall, we would have furnaces, water heaters, all the things we need to do to train people right there in the classroom. This is a solar classroom, so we have solar panels on the roof that are actually powering things in that room and with dashboards where people can see how much solar energy is being generated, and then props to show them how to decide whether solar is a good idea in a home and how to get it installed. We have a test house so people can do their certifications, small test houses where they can practice things, a manufactured home, because a lot of our clients in the weatherization program are manufactured housing, and so that's a prop inside the building to be able to teach people about manufactured housing. We're looking to build a, a two-apartment by two apartments, so a four-unit apartment building, because also a lot of our clients live in multifamily housing, and assessing that is different because you're connected to other people's units, not just outside. So, that would be full-scale, like 600-square-foot apartments, four units, so that we can train people how to properly assess and weatherize multifamily buildings. This would be a two-story house inside the warehouse. We need like 28-foot clear ceilings, where we can teach people about all kinds of different things that happen in houses, and really be able to assess full-scale houses. Heat pump house are just entirely focused on heat pumps, which are a big deal with electrification and decarbonization right now. And then, additional things, props, equipment storage, et cetera. So, it's a very exciting opportunity.
Paul, before you, don't forget the recording studio.
Oh, yes. And we are having, we're going to have a recording studio. And so, the recording studio is intended for producing videos, online content, very high quality, so that, let's say, for example, somebody's out in the field, they're at a house, they haven't been to a house with a boiler in six months, and they're looking at a boiler in a house, and they're not sure what to do because it's been six months. There's a video to help them remember, like a three-minute video, "That's right, that's what I do with a boiler," so that they can really serve our clients in the best way possible. So, yeah, our BPI test house, that's where people can do their testing for their national certifications, some elevations on that. These are not necessarily, I mean, they're pretty much, that would be like a full-size small home. Okay. These are weatherization house, that would be a two-story house. It's, it's full-size, it would probably be about a 1,600-square-foot home. So, maybe if we have guest lectures, they'd sleep here instead of just putting them up in a hotel. It'll be fully functional. Everything, everything will work. And so, so we have the second story where we've got some finished attic parks, some unfinished attic parks, so people can really understand the details of all of these things. And this is all so we can support doing the best job that we can across the entire state of Illinois for serving our low-income clients, improving the efficiency and well, healthiness, well-being of their homes. Yeah, so that's, that's the elevations of the, oh, this is a multifamily, so two-story multifamily by two units, side by side again. So, it's, it's a very exciting project. I think we'll just, there's a lot of details on here, and I'm going to just skip through that, see if there's anything. And I'm going to just skip through that, see if there's anything else I want to, that's it. Anyway, it is a very exciting project to see these full-scale props that we can train people in all types of housing that our clients live in. And the support from the state, from DCEO to do this, I think is exceptional. And it should make really Champaign be the premier training facility in the entire country. We are looking to locate this near hotels, restaurants, very importantly, near bus lines. While for our normal program, people coming from all over the state, they drive, we would like to be able to offer it to local youth, returning citizens, folks for whom bus service to get there can be really, really key. So that's part of the decision process for where it's being located. And we're working towards searching for a space to do this. We're still getting the final details on the contracting.
Question. With all this training going on, is this something you're going to coordinate with like Parkland or someone like that? Or is this something separately that you're doing for the state?
So what we're doing, the core for this is separate from anything with Parkland. However, I mentioned that we were a sub to this project with Parkland as the prime. And that would fund us to do significant training that if we have this facility, would be here. And the training we've been doing for twenty years has been from the state focused on the weatherization program. So I see this as being something that provides many opportunities for partnership with Parkland where we've got good alignment in what we're doing. And I'm very interested in pursuing that. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for Paul? Tammy.
As Paul mentioned, we are finalizing a contract with a broker to help us search for this space. So I expect that contract to be executed today. And that will be with Alex Ruggieri. He's very excited to get started on the search for the space for ICERT. And just an update in regards to our RPC's search for space. We are continuing to look for space. We have not identified space yet. We have a couple of buildings that we've looked at that have been of interest to us, but nothing has been, you know, panned out so far. So we are continuing to discuss with the county opportunities for potentially staying here, at least for a period of time. We have a meeting with them next week. One of the risks, though, that we foresee in staying here is that while there may be support from the current administration and board to retain Brookins and allow for our RPC to stay here, that may not necessarily be the position of future administration and boards. So we are going to continue our search for space. But in conjunction with that, discuss with the county what the options for staying here would look like. There are a lot of details that would have to be worked through and, and discussed if we do end up staying here at least for a period of time.
Any questions for Tammy?
No necessary question for Tammy. It's going to fall if there are no other questions. Were we supposed to approve something to Human Resources?
Yes, please.
I think there was the personnel transactions for November 5th and January 13th, 2024 that we didn't approve by the board. So if that, if there's no other issues, I'd make the motion to approve that.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Bo.
Flat-out not seeing it. I told you I didn't.
No, no, that's why I wait.
It's fine. So, well, I appreciate you bringing it up. As I said, I either flat-out didn't see it or I didn't have it here, so. All right, thank you.
See, there's a motion, so she called.
All right, so all group, or any discussion, any further discussions to say? All on paper.
Aye.
Close.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you, Mayor. I will be very brief, just a couple of updates more on the legislative front. I was scheduled to meet with our new state representative, Brandon Schweizer, in Danville on Monday, I believe. But due to the weather, we have to postpone that. Paul already reported on the visit we had with Senator Archie yesterday, which was very successful. And I think we'll continue to engage our elected officials, not just with ICERT, but with the other programs that we have here at RPC. The last I wanted to share is that I've been working with Representative Emmens more related to our LAI program, the state-funded part of it. In the current statute, there's a sunset clause, which would mean that the program would sunset January 1st, 2025. And if that were to happen, we would lose about a hundred million dollars statewide of state funding. So she has introduced a bill, House Bill 471, which strikes out the sunset clause. And right now, that bill sits in rules. And we're working to get co-sponsors for the bill. And then it will be assigned to some other committee within, within the House. And I don't foresee there being a problem with this passing because it still is a very much needed program. So we're hopeful that this will go through the process and get, you know, passed both chambers and governor signs at some point. That's all I have.
Deluxo, the, my, the clause, Representative Emmons is working on. Is that to have a termination, a new termination date? Or is it to eliminate a termination date?
No more termination date.
Okay, good.
Other questions for Deluxo? Old business or new business? If not, would I hear a motion to adjourn? On cable?
Aye.
Posty Carey.